The grandbaby is great. And the rest of my miracles. One of them was from the cold, the other ones, when they're dry, crunchy, and just break easy, that's spray.
Okay, it is six o'clock, Monday, October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. We'll call this meeting to order and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next we'll have the roll call.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
And Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, next is approval of tonight's agenda.
So move.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Next is our public participation portion.
Simonsen, sorry.
Simonsen, oh, sorry. You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is the public portion, public participation portion of our meeting. Do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to get up and address the council? Okay. I need you to state your name when you get up, and if you could, just limit your remarks to three minutes.
Okay. My name's Tom Darrell. I've got two topics to talk to, on behalf of my wife and I, Alice, about the two-mile setback for the wind turbines. We support that maximum two-mile setback from city limits. I'd encourage you to go to the maximum two miles on that. Also encourage anybody here, board, council, anybody that's watching this, go to the supervisor meetings when they have them to talk about these turbines, so you can get educated on those. All right, second topic I'd like to talk about is the fireworks. I presented this to the safety committee a few weeks ago. Just going to reiterate what I spoke about last time. I have twenty-nine years as a safety director in industries here in Macokata, so know a little bit about safety and trying to keep employees safe, people safe. So what we talk about is celebrating Independence Day. Independence Day is one day out of the year. It's not a week, it's not the week prior to, it's not the week after, it's not days before, it's not day after, it's one day. I'd like to limit our celebrating that Independence Day with fireworks to one day. Some years back, I came to the safety committee. The police chief spoke about the concerns, and the safety, the fire chief did the same. Others spoke about the dangers and the safety of issues on fireworks. The committee members agreed, but still, we have a week where we can set fireworks off. So when these start off, going off a week before, when it's legal, they go off before that, they go off afterwards, they go off after the time, they go off before the time. It's like we're in a war zone here in Macokata. In my neighborhood, it literally sounds like what I would only have to perceive as a war. So that terrorizes my dog, for one, which then also terrorizes me because that is our full responsibility. Yes, it's only a dog, but it's our dog. It's our family member, so we consider that a very high priority. I'm trying to cut this short, so to get my three minutes in. So veterans, veterans with PTSD. I've talked to several, I talked to some that tried to get them to come tonight, but they just, they don't want to come and speak. You know, but it's real. They have concerns about when fireworks are going off. I know one gentleman, as I said last time, that fireworks are going off, he grabs his gun and he goes outside because he doesn't want to be inside. He's not safe. Talked about the city code getting changed. Everybody has the right to set them off for city code. That right, however, infringes on my rights to acceptable noise levels for my property. I just ask you to keep that into, into your thoughts when you're thinking about that. We talked a little bit about with Chief Zymet about enforcement. There isn't really much they can do. They're not trained on fireworks, they don't know if it's a legal firework, illegal firework. It's hard to catch them, it's hard to enforce. I know it was talked about last time, well, you got to know the person that is setting them off. Well, I think that's kind of similar to these cameras that get you speeding, all right? The person driving doesn't get the ticket, the owner of that, of that place gets the ticket. So owner of a house, that'd be easy way. Owner of the house, they're setting them off there, they should get, they should get penalized for it.
Tom, you've hit three minutes.
Three minutes, Ben, three minutes? Okay, thank you. I just, just real quick, it was past two days, Thursday, or the third and the fourth. Just like you to keep that and maybe limit the time.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Is there anybody else who wants to address us? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Item seven is our consent agenda. That consists of the minutes from the October seventh regular meeting and the October seventh goal setting. Bills payable through October twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, in the amount of one million, one hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. Our September financial reports, renewal of a Class C alcohol license filed by City Limits Restaurant.
So move.
Okay, we've got a motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Item eight is old business, and we have no old business, but we've got a lot of new business. So item A is a resolution requesting Jackson County implement a wind turbine setback requirements from the city limits of Macokata.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't have a lot to add tonight on this topic, and just with some of the attention that this has received and not knowing what was going to happen tonight here for public participation. I did consult with their city attorney, and two miles is what we can request, and that's all it is, is a request. This is really the board of supervisors' territory, not ours. Out at the airport, our airport consultant has given us a protective zone map of what the airspace looks like out to seventy-five hundred feet. Visitors from Next Terra Energy, which I guess is the company that's interested in Clinton County work, came to the airport commission last Monday night and described the exact same thing. That if there was ever a project in Jackson County, they would have to do exactly what the FAA told them to do. So there's not a ton of action that falls within the purview of the city council, but you are allowed to make a request. I've done that by phone, but we can acknowledge it by resolution here and move past this in some sort of swift way, which I think is recommended. And it would be nice for especially residents down by Swagosa Country Club, hopefully not have to stare at windmills, you know, five hundred or a thousand feet away someday.
Okay. We have nothing else, then?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we request a two-mile setback.
Okay. We have a motion by Rickrell, seconded by Alinger. If there's no more discussion, take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is a resolution approving environmental consultant agreement with Atlas in the amount of seventy-two thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. This is, this is a result of the DNR and EPA really kind of asking the city what's next at the former Clinton Engine's property. This is a problem that just doesn't go away because we're not doing anything. We have to come into a plan for a no further action certificate. And so while this might feel similar to the last twenty years, we did go through quite the selection process to this agreement here, which is a multi-year agreement for seventy-two nine, and it aims towards getting a full EPA cleanup grant for a hundred percent federal paid, hopefully next fall. And that's our hope. And so we're going to get to that point, and we've never proceeded as far as we're about to with this action plan. And some of these expenses can be claimed on the urban renewal plan under TIF, under belief that that property can be returned to good use and property tax-producing use someday. And so this is going to be a journey, but this agreement at least starts us down that path and then pushes us towards hopefully turning that back into a good market reuse, which is being studied currently right now by Kansas State University. Finance and Personnel Committee took this up at our last meeting. We discussed a little bit of the status of what the DNR and EPA are requesting and what's required of us. And the general sense that I get from DNR officials is that this is really kind of voluntary still, and should we get into the different category, I think it would come to us anyway, plus attorney expense. So I don't know how much of a great choice you have in this, but I think this is smart to continue on a proactive path to, to get that property into reuse.
Okay, anybody else have anything? And take your motion. Okay, we have a motion by Bennett.
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. If we have no more discussion, take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
That passes. Item C is a resolution approving a Public Works Director Employment Contract for John Hobson.
Thank you, Mayor. And first off, you know, some of our department heads, whether it's Chief Zymet, Jen, now John, assuming you pass this, really proud of how we've come up with some local talent here and helped our city out with its continuity. John's been outstanding as an interim. He's, I think he's been excited by some of the challenge. He had a family emergency tonight and cannot be here, but he's sent me multiple text messages, and he called me earlier a couple times. We talked about it during our department head meeting, so he was, he needs to be elsewhere, but he really wanted to express his gratitude tonight. And we considered this at our Finance and Personnel Committee with some of the broad details that are listed here in the writing. I don't know if you've had a chance to review his full contract, but he's just thrilled to begin, and it sets into motion allowing us to open up a position too at Public Works Department, so we're looking to move forward.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion, motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item D is a resolution accepting bid in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred dollars submitted by Peerless Well and Pump for a reservoir pump.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The most I know about what this actually does is it's a nineteen seventy-nine pump, and I should probably turn over to Jen for a better explanation.
So we have three reservoir pumps in Macokata, and they fill the water towers. Our wells fill the reservoir, and then our reservoir pumps fill the water towers. So we have two small pumps and one large pump. The two small pumps were purchased in nineteen seventy-nine. They've been rebuilt over and over and over, and they've come to the point they can't be rebuilt. The other one is still chugging away. I do, I told them at Public Works meeting, I do want to look at replacing that in the near future as well, but we're going to tackle the one that isn't working. The two small ones are the oldest ones. The older one, or the largest one, was put in quite a few years after. And so tonight I'm asking to replace the one that hasn't been working. We've just rebuilt it beyond the point. At Public Works meeting, they asked me to ask what kind of warranty it has. It has one-year warranty on it.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item E is a resolution setting dates of consultation and a public hearing on a proposed amendment number five to the Macokata Amendment and restart Unified Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Macokata, state of Iowa. Go ahead.
Mayor, Council, this item is Judy Carr's least favorite public action item, and I promised her I'd pull it off before her retirement. So that's, that's what's in front of you tonight, is the first resolution to start a public hearing for an urban renewal plan update, which is required to have a valid TIF claim every year. So you need to have one on the books, and there's a couple contractual expenses that need to continue on. And for that to be a valid claim, we need to have an update. So it's a minor update, and it's just with the objective to continue a couple of those contracts. And we've talked about some aquatic features before, and that would also be included in this particular urban renewal plan on the basis that it does attract visitors and hopefully residents. So there's a couple minor details involved in your council packet such as that.
Okay.
So move.
We have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. I have no discussion. Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
That passes. Item F is a resolution authorizing borrowing from WPPI Energy for Airport Solar System Project. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have a ton to add to this, other than the fact that this is the loan documents for what we've already discussed for the financing for both of these next action items.
So move.
Okay, motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. And there's no discussion, so take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, next item is a resolution authorizing borrowing from WPPI Energy for the wastewater plant solar project.
So move.
Motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Sorry.
All right, that one passes. Item H is a resolution accepting a bid in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars and forty cents submitted by Wagner Nursery for the twenty-four Fall DNR Grant Tree Planting Program, Program.
Is that a subliminal slip there? Well, it is a problem because it's very dry out, so the grant requirements on this, and this is a grant-paid program. We didn't just go out in the driest weather ever and want to plant forty-eight trees. But according to the DNR and the grant rules, we had to plant these forty-eight trees by the end of the month. So we need to authorize this grant. We're going to have, unfortunately, a lot of watering duties, and there's some diapers involved with these trees to make sure that they retain the moisture when we water them. But, you know, this, this helps us recover a little bit from the May wind blast and how much urban forestry lost, and adds a couple trees where they're needed.
So move. Okay. Motion by Alinger, seconded by Bennett. We have no discussion. Take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item I is a resolution approving grant, approving change order number one to increase the amount to four thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and ninety-seven cents for garage door installation services and authorizing payment to blue construction in the amount of four thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one could have been ready for the last council meeting, but we weren't quite there for bill documentation. So what happened with this particular item was that the door was just mis-sized, and then we had, we, contractor had to reorder a new door size. And so that was one. And then, two, we never bid out a garage door opener. And so when we have a door this size, I don't think it was necessary to use human shoulder strength to throw up this size of a door without possible, I guess, worker risk and then deal with that. So we thought it was prudent just to invest a little bit of money into this, and then call the change order later on this item. Documentation's sufficient. We wanted to see order sheet and the cost and breakout of labor and materials, and that's what we have, and that's why it's a change order now in front of you.
Okay.
So move.
Okay, motion by Bennett.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. There's no discussion. Take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item J is a resolution approving agreement for Surface Transportation Block Grant Program Federal Aid Swap Project for the Summit and Main Intersection.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a routine STBG federal agreement. The exact financing of this agreement, as you may recall, is a little bit of the STBG funds, which ECIA manages as part of their RPA program. Two hundred ninety thousand from the Traffic Safety Improvement Program through the state. So you're looking at effectively only engineering costs, which sit at about eleven thousand dollars overall for this entire intersection improvement. Engineers estimate it's better than expected right now, so hopefully this four hundred thousand stays true. But we've submitted check plans already to the state. They're under review. This image that's in front of you is probably the best feature image of what we have so far. Each of the neighbors have been consulted in the production of these plans, so this is no surprise to anyone at these four corners, and they've been involved throughout this process. This is just routine agreement signing. It just was showing it off a little bit because it's a nice little development on a bad intersection.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. And if there's no discussion, go ahead and take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item K is a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of a contract, cost estimate, setting a public hearing date for the Prairie Creek Recreational Project and authorizing staff to request bids.
Do you want to speak, Travis?
I don't know if you want to give a summary, or you want me to give a summary?
You can knock it out. We're going pretty quickly through this, so. This is Travis Freeze, the WHKS.
Project manager, WHKS. So we prepared the plans and specs to go out to bid for the Prairie Creek Trail and Disc Golf Course, which has two bridges involved in the project. As part of this project, we're going to bid the bigger bridge, which is going to be adjacent to the highway bridge, as part of the base bid, and we're going to bid the smaller bridge, which is farther down the trail separately as a bid alternate, so that we, you may choose to accept that bid, or, you know, do that at a later date based on the cost estimates that we were seeing. That was the decision that we had to move forward with. So as part of this, I believe seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of it was going to be grant-funded.
That's correct.
Okay, so our estimated cost for the base bid was one point three one million, so seven hundred fifty of that will be covered by the grant money. The rest would be covered by the city or other, other means and possibly other grant sources if something came through. But basically tonight, all I need is permission to take this out to bid and, and get the numbers from the contractors.
Do we have all the DOT blessings we need to put that bridge?
We've been working with DOT. We don't have the final sign-off, but we will have to get a permit. But based on my most recent discussion, there's very little comment, and we addressed all the comments that they had. So I haven't gotten final sign-off back on that, but I do fully expect to be receiving permission from the DOT.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item I is a resolution directing Planning and Zoning Commission to study and make recommendations regarding amendment to the zoning code.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'd really like not to be talking about Meadow Park very much anymore, and I really tried avoiding putting this in front of you. But according to our city attorneys and many conversations with, with Brad, what we've been doing for granting duplex variances is incorrect. And, and, and we've been doing them on, on quote, "Macokata-style" variances, which they say just stop it, get your zoning code right. So this is what this is. There's duplexes in town that are prevalent. They're going up in Meadow Park. We're looking to make the zoning code correct so that we don't have to deal with this again. This is a recommendation from the council to kick it to planning and zoning, so it can come back to you as a zoning alteration language at a later time in R one, R two, and R three.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Is there any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item M is a resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed one million dollars general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Macokata, state of Iowa for essential corporate purposes and providing for the publication of the notice thereafter. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the next set of items. Looks like we're borrowing a lot of money, and it's been planned. This first item we're discussing here tonight is a little bit of a good problem to have. And in our debt service fund balance, we have in excess nine hundred ninety-some thousand dollars, but it's built up over time. And so Finance and Personnel Committee and Andrea White, our finance clerk, we all kind of discussed how to use this in a fair and equitable way, and we feel like applying that excess balance to the wastewater treatment plant is a good way to do that because it hits all citizens. It applies a bit of a balance boost across the board, and the way the proceedings have to work with this are kind of funny in that we have to take a one million dollar, one-day loan from a local bank here and pay it off immediately with our, that fund balance I'm discussing. And then that money gets freed up to be applied to the wastewater plant so that our following bond, which would have been a four point two million dollar one, is in effect a three point two. It's not as big of a debt as it could have been. That's maybe a summary for this one and the next item. There are questions on that. It's kind of goofy, but...
Any questions? Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. If we have no discussions, take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item N is a resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed three million, two hundred thousand dollar sewer revenue capital loan notes of the city of Macokata, state of Iowa, and providing for publication of notices thereof. Go ahead.
I have nothing further.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes, too. Item O, a resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed one million, two-
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This one related but tied to that Prairie Creek Recreation Project that you just saw an image of and Travis presented on. This allows us to take our SRF debt for the wastewater treatment plant and adjust the interest down so it's the same equal payment, and we get this 1.2 million as principal to use on that Prairie Creek Recreation Project. So as you know, the, or may not know, the, the mobilization for that job's going to begin next month, and there's going to be a lot of equipment moving through birch, over the hillsides, and I don't do that for a living. I kind of want to go watch just to see how it's going to work, but they're going to start in with the water, watershed improvements, and it's going to be a go here shortly.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Is there any no discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, item P is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macochona, Iowa by repealing Chapter 56 pertaining to dog and cat licensing requirements. This is the first reading. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Councilman Simonson or JT, if there's something I'm missing here, please feel free to jump in. So annually, we, we have a small fee for a pet license registration, and we, we, I guess the revenue's $1,900. We send out about 200 licenses, and it's about eight or nine percent of the total utility counts in, in, in the city. It doesn't seem to be an effective program. It doesn't really solve any police issues, and JT's over there shaking his head, but if, if a dog's loose, or a cat's loose, or if there's a nuisance animal, there's other charging mechanisms here that we can have the police go with for municipal fraction or, or otherwise. So we, we feel like it was well-intended and also meant possibly to eventually have a pet limit in town, but it hasn't done what we've wanted it to. And so for the police and our staff, I think it's worthy of, of just rescinding the ordinance at this point, and our Public Safety Committee discussed this, and Chief Zymet explained a little bit of the same police procedures for this. You may ask the question, well, part of it was an identification, and if the program was 100% followed, it would have been really a valuable program. A lot of pets that come from shelters nowadays anyway come chipped, and I think I, right now, as I understand it, there's no chip reader at the police department, but I think we can easily obtain one. It came from a police department that did have a couple of them. They're, they're not that hard to use, so it's the direction we'd like to have, and staff recommends it, and Public Safety Committee took it up, and it's before you tonight for consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Rickrell, seconded by Bennett. And if there's no discussion, take the roll.
Alinger?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item Q is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Macochona, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to fireworks. This is also the first reading. Go ahead.